Hey, the committee on judiciary and Hawaiian affairs called to order Wednesday, February 16, 2022, 2:00 PM, office room 325. Members, we have a number of items on the agenda today. Beginning with House Bill 2309, vice chair.
So we'll start off with HD, sorry HB 2309, HD1 relating to incarceration. I just want to remind the testifiers that you have two minutes to testify. Try to keep it in two minutes out of respect for the other testifiers to give them sufficient time to get through. And also just a note for the departments that we've noticed a lot of departments submitting identical testimonies. Some four or five pieces of identical testimony. You'll only really need to submit one piece of testimony. You can share that Zoom link and then if that person submitting it cannot appear, someone else from your department can appear on behalf of that person. That's totally fine. It just keeps the clutter in our committee a little bit down. Okay, so first up, we've got HB 2309, HD1 relating to incarceration. The Department of Human Services submitted testimony with comments, but is not here. So Department of Public Safety with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair Max Latony, Department of Public Safety. Department will stand on our written comments. And we would like you to take note about the jurisdiction as far as offenders that exit our facilities that we no longer have control over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder to the testifiers to turn off your cameras when you're not testifying, please. Next up, we have the State of Hawaii Department of Budget and Finance with comments, but they're not here either. State of Hawaii Judiciary in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, members of the committee. My name is Dwight Sakai. I am the Deputy Chief Court Administrator of the First Circuit. The judiciary supports House Bill 2309 as it will provide much needed resources and funding to nonprofit programs that provide direct services to offenders under the jurisdiction of the judiciary. Offenders may face challenges in rehabilitating their lives. Nonprofit community programs and the judiciary have a long history in working together to help them. The impact is significant not only for the offenders, but for their families and the community. Providing this needed funding will ensure that their work continues. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this bill. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have the ACLU of Hawaii in support. Not present. We have late testimony from the Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition and the Hawaii Health and Reduction Center, both in support. But that's all we have today. Members, any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Report.
To the judiciary, please. Or the ACLU. Will this take a bite out of recidivism? I mean, to me, that's the gold standard or the measurement of any of the programs we do for public safety or for anything to do with incarceration. What is the rate? Let me start with this. What is the rate of recidivism right now, three to five years? Hello?
Representative Ward, thank you for your question. We'd have to look at the, you know, the way that recidivism works is that we measure recidivism by taking a cohort and we look at three years from when they were sentenced. And what we do in Hawaii is we count arrests, right, or any arrests that incur. So right now, from the 2016 study, I believe the recidivism rate is 51%, which is something that we are definitely addressing and trying to work on. And your question is, how does this help having more of those services, those community based services that can assist defendants and offenders, not just with treatment, but other wraparound services, housing, support services?
Jobs.
Will help them.
Good jobs. So this was a 2016 study that said recidivism. Did you say 51 or 61%?
51.
51. 51. And which state has the gold standard and what is their recidivism?
Then I'd have to find that out for you. I'm not sure. I don't have that knowledge right now with me.
The point is, if we're trying to rehabilitate people and 50, and in fact, the last number I had was like 70% recidivism. I mean, if 50 to 70% go back, it's like going to a doctor and 70% of the time you don't get healed. So why even go to the doctor? Anyways, that's the frustration of having followed this recidivism rate. It doesn't seem to go down, which I find very, very disturbing. Thank you for your testimony. I know it's not your kuli'ana. It's all of ours, but we got to do a better job. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? If not, we're moving on to HB 2311, HD1 relating to native Hawaiian rehabilitation programs. First up, we have the Department of Public Safety in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair, members of the committee. First of all, my apologies on the error on our written testimony as far as the committee. The department will stand on this written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have the Community Alliance on Prisons in support.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in strong support of this measure. We have actually seen the results of Native Hawaiian programs. They were started by our men when they were in Minnesota. And I know people who started in that initial program and who actually are back in the community being successful, helpful and contributing citizens. So this is really a terrific bill and I hope you pass it. Mahalo.
Yeah, thank you. We also have a number of other people submitting, people in departments submitting testimony. The Department of Human Services with comments, OHA with comments. The Department of Budget and Finance with comments. The Center for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies and Opposition, Opportunity Youth Action, we in support. Hawaii Health and Reduction Center in support and another individual in support, but they are not here to testify today. Members, any questions? During that, we'll move on to HB 2171, HD1 relating to public safety. You know, I noticed Public Safety's Sheriff's Division here. I thought I saw them online. Are they here? They're indicated that they're not testifying today, but would they like to testify? Cool. Okay. That is one department that submitted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pieces of testimony, all identical. We do have the Department of the Attorney General here in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mateyoshi, Krigiha Deputy Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General supports this bill because it will allow for a separate Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation that will be able to perform its core mission without needing to split focus with law enforcement activities. And similarly, the bill consolidates certain state law enforcement within a single Department of Law Enforcement under a single chain of command. And so this will allow each agency to concentrate on their respective distinct missions and will give clarity to planning, operations and oversight. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this bill.
Good, thank you. Next, we have the Department of Transportation in support.
Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, members of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Department of Transportation is in support of the measure and in the interest of time, we would like to stand on our written testimony in support. Mahalo.
Thank you. I have a note here, Patrick, that there are two individuals from DOT that wanted to testify. Is there another person from DOT who'd like to testify today?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Hawaii Proling Authority in support.
I'm here trying to get my video going, sir.
Okay, we can hear you. If you can't get your video going, you can testify just by voice if you'd like.
He's muted.
He's muted? Okay, why don't we come back to you? Department of Defense. Hey Fred, you good?
Okay, I'm good now.
Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi and committee members. My name is Edmund Fred Hill. I'm the chairperson of the Hawaii Proling Authority and I'm in strong support of House Bill 2171 to establish a new department in law enforcement that will consolidate, administer law enforcement and investigation functions of the state departments. I stand on my written testimony, but just to present following key points. Hawaii is the only state in the nation with a combined function of jails, prisons, law enforcement and narcotics regulatory duties. The span of control under the PSD Director is too broad and conflicting. There are several benefits to the state by establishing, there are significant benefits to the state by establishing a Department of Law Enforcement and a Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to present testimony and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have the Department of Defense in support, State of Hawaii Department of Defense.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for your time. I am Frank Pace, the administrator for the Hawaii Office of Homeland Security. I'm here representing Major General Hara and the Department of Defense. General Hara stands on his submitted testimony in support of this bill, HB 2171. And I am prepared to answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Department of Public Safety in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members, Max Latony, Director, Department of Public Safety. Department, thanks for hearing House Bill 2171. And we strongly ask for your support of this measure. In summary of our written testimony, you know, while both belong to the criminal justice system, corrections and law enforcement have two distinctly different functions and operate independently. The creation of the Department of Law Enforcement will consolidate various law enforcement entities and will provide a more efficient and a better oversight, standardized training and more accountability. The renaming and reorganization of the new Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation will have a dedicated deputy director assigned and focused on inmate programming and rehabilitation. We would like to note that much of the amendments in this draft are there to clarify and ensure that the new Department of Law Enforcement does not infringe on the duties and responsibility of our county police departments. Again, we thank you for allowing us to testify and be available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have the prosecutors, Honolulu Prosecutor's Office in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the department. Department is in support of HB 2171, HD1. Just want to let the committee know we appreciate the last committee, the House Committee on Corrections, Military and Veterans on adopting some of the amendments that the department suggested in its testimony that would ensure that the bill does not impair or diminish the authority and duties and functions of the county police. So we will be present for any questions as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And there are a number of other departments that came out in support with comments and we had about 43 individuals testifying in support and three in opposition. I do want to note that Public Safety Sheriff's Division submitted 11 pieces of testimony, although a lot of them were individualized. They were not the repeats of some other departments too. So thank you for that testimony. Members, any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Rep Nakamura.
Thank you. I have a question for the Attorney General. Thank you, Mr. Iha. I wanted to ask you about the 70 new positions on the $4 million budget. What, why are so many positions required of this new department?
Representative, that's a good question. I can answer that question, although the Department of Public Safety might have better detail. In general, the new positions are for administrative positions that you would need to stand up a separate agency. And there's also, you know, slight differences in the numbers of deputy directors and people like that by splitting these two agencies, splitting one agency into two agency.
That's what I've been wondering. If you're taking these positions from existing organizations, do they not come with a head of that division that's now going to move over to this new department? Or are you?
For the most part, the deputies will move over. I believe there's a difference of one deputy. But again, I defer to the Department of Public Safety and the details.
Because 70 new positions seems like a lot of admin positions if the, if the job descriptions are the same. I just have that question. And then I have another question. Dokeir on the island of Koai enforcing deal in our laws are really critical and there doesn't seem to be consistent and enforcement, especially relating to our parks and our ocean areas. And was wondering, does Dokeir also move into this new law enforcement agency?
Dokeir will not be moving into this law enforcement agency. And, you know, my understanding is that the Dokeir serves a different kind of function that relates more strictly to conservation and resources enforcement versus traditional law enforcement. So that's the general policy reason why Dokeir is not moving over. And I would defer to the law enforcement agencies to give you more specifics.
Okay. And does this work? What is the estimated cost of the law enforcement training center? And is there existing training centers available for the current workers who are doing this work?
There are various training facilities. I believe the Sheriff's Division does have its own training facility. I do not have any specific numbers for the new training center, and I would, again, have to defer to the Department of Public Safety.
Is, is public safety available to answer these questions?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
I have Deputy Director here joining law enforcement. It's probably most person answering your questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So in terms of the additional seventy positions, the majority of them are for administrative infrastructure. However, there's at least six positions that are supervisory positions for, for Sheriff's Division to provide better accountability. Those would be captain positions. We do, we are moving over the training positions over to the Department of Law Enforcement, and that, that accounts for another, another five or six positions. And in conjunction with with the Office of Homeland Security coming over to the new department, we, we asked for an additional five positions to be investigative positions to be able to validate the intelligence leads that come, that comes over. So that's, that, that accounts for the seventy positions that we have. Now, in turn, and as you indicated, some positions from public safety may transfer over to this new department, but that would be at the discretion of the employees. We, we can, for in terms of the admin positions, we, we can, we cannot make them come over. We would have to be volunteering on their part.
Yeah. Oh, okay. And then you do have a training center, you said?
We, we have a training staff that we would, initially, we would be sharing with the current Department of Public Safety. There is a training center that, where the property is being leased. The, the issue that we were having in terms of the training is your corrections personnel are norm, they normally receive six, I'm sorry, ten weeks of training, whereas the law enforcement personnel would, are required to have six months of training. So that the training curriculum is vastly different. And in relation to the other question regarding Dokeir, we did, we did approach Dokeir. We welcomed them if they wanted to join us, but they declined because they felt they were more educational versus law enforcement in their, in their primary function. However, as we have done in the past, you know, anytime Dokeir, Department of Transportation, or any other agency would ask for law enforcement assistance, we would provide it from the Sheriff's Division.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarifications.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, report.
To the Department of Public Safety. Yes, generally speaking, every cost has a benefit. Every benefit has a cost. How would you do a quick and dirty cost benefit analysis by the bifurcation and the amount of money that is going to be spent? Will we get lower recidivism? Or are we going to get happy camper employees? Other than conforming to what the mainland is doing, what, what's the strategic advantage that I can tell my constituents by passing this bill?
Well, sir, I, I think the first thing is we would get happier employees. I think we would follow best practice. Again, like the other mainland law enforcement agency and the local law enforcement agency, because our, our model follows the local police departments here on the neighbor islands and on Oahu. I, I think this standardized training that we will provide, you know, in terms of our recruit class, our annual recall training and our firearms training is of great benefit. It would reduce our liability in terms of potential lawsuits. I think, you know, that's, that's also huge. And, you know, what, what we hope for is as we standardize this and we provide a force multiplier, you know, to the smaller agencies such as, you know, currently the Harpers Police. You know, they're stretched a little thin. They, you know, they only have, I think, nineteen officers in total with the, with the supervisory personnel. So if there was ever an incident, you know, we, we would be able to respond, you know, to assist them, you know, quickly, you know, you know, with a larger, larger force. And, and again, we would absorb their training costs. That, that's, that's, that's another thing that I think that would, that would help us. And there's a, there's also right now, because of all of our responsibility, we're incurring a lot of overtime. And I think with this consolidation, we would be better managed to that. And reduce.
And the cost would be four million dollars per year, or is that just for the transition?
Well, we will hope that it will continue year round. I mean, as moving forward.
Sir, I was hoping you would mention the R word, the recidivism, because of the efficiency and the happier campers, you're going to actually have rehab go up a notch. You didn't mention it, but for those on the mainland who do have this system, how is their rate going?
Okay, sir, so I, I'm deferring to Deputy Director of Corrections, Tommy Johnson.
Okay, Tommy would be the more likely to do that.
Yeah. Hello, Representative Ward and members of the committee. With the separation of two agencies, what you would then get is a department of corrections rehabilitation that could concentrate its resources on rehabilitating and providing targeted services to the inmate population, including extensive reentry efforts. That is where you're going to get your better recidivism rates and you're going to get your better outcomes. Right now, the missions of law enforcement corrections are wholly different. So by splitting the two agencies, they have an agency and its staff directly concentrating on programs and services and reentry, I think we'll get better outcomes in respect to the assessments we do, the targeted program we provide based on the assessments and a better reentry program. As a result of that, we'll get better outcomes, which should be, which should translate into lower recidivism.
It, it does. Can, can we count on you fulfilling that? Can we hold you accountable for what you just said? I like it.
That would be up to the next governor to appoint me as the director.
Good comeback. That was a good comeback. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair. We've got some humor in our meeting, finally.
All right, thank you. Any members, any further questions? In fact, I've got one to follow up on one of Rep Nakamura's comments or questions, because the seventy positions does seem like a lot. I, my understanding was that we were consolidating these not only for force multipliers and other things, but also to increase efficiency. And if every department, say, has an HR person, or, you know, you name it, then why are we, when, when combining all of these departments, actually gaining more positions? Shouldn't we be losing positions? So my question is, okay, maybe we're gaining seventy positions because of XYZ. I mean, you, you name some captains and accountability things. How many positions will we also be losing by combining these departments? So what I want to know is, is seventy gross or net of gain, gaining employees? Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it would be seventy positions.
Gross or net?
From, from what we were looking at, it would probably be forty positions additional net.
Forty net gain, five positions.
And that's, that's an estimate. Yes.
But, but how many are, are we losing any positions by combining these departments? Because I'm, I'm assuming you're going to have three, four, maybe more people who are doing the same job in multiple departments that could, that maybe two people could handle when, when everything is combined. Is, is none of that happening?
So, so what, what, what we're actually anticipating is because the Department of Public Safety are, are going to lose basically the Sheriff's Division, Narcotics Enforcement Division, and Internal Affairs. Their, their total number of employees are going to be less. So then the people supporting those programs, you know, at their own discretion would come over, come over to the Department of Law Enforcement. So there's, there's no real duplication, and we're not actually increasing the total, the total force in terms of those numbers.
So you're saying the seventy is going to be from people coming over? That they're not brand new positions? They're just transferred positions? Is that what you're saying?
Some of them are going to be transfers. The law enforcement positions are going to be new, but so, some of the administrative positions are going to be transferred over.
Okay, and then those transferred positions are counted towards the seventy that Rep Nakamura referred to? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct. It would count against the, the seventy positions. Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions?
Chair, let me follow up on what you just said.
Okay.
You just made.
But we want, if you want to move on, too.
Wait, am I? Okay, very importantly, when you said it's the transfer of their own volition, what if people don't want to transfer? I mean, I, I don't, is that a union issue, or is that something where, you know, it's laissez faire? How, how can you make a new department and you give people an option to go or not to go? When in effect, we're legislating this new department?
Representative Ward, yeah, it would be a union issue. Once this bill is passed, then we would have to negotiate with the unions as far as employees that want to trans, current employees in the Department of Public Safety that want to transfer to the new department.
And if they don't want to, what do we do with the new department we just created? We got to hire more employees.
If, if they don't, if they don't want to transfer, if it's a new position there, then we would advertise for that position.
It sounds a bit loosey goosey to me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. That's, that's puzzling.
Yeah, no, I, I hope you folks are not waiting to talk to the union, because it's probably going to be a long talk. But let's move on. HB seventeen thirty-eight, HD1, relating to confinement. First up, Department of Public Safety in support. I'm sorry. Yeah, with comments.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Max Lutani again, Department of Public Safety. We would stand on our comments, and basically, we would ask the committee to take a look at codifying these, these, our policies into, into law, because it would kind of hinder us from making any corrective changes should, should there be any best practice changes within the country. Ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next up, we have Community Alliance on Prisons in Support.
Sure. Aloha. Cat Brady, testifying in strong support for Community Alliance on Prisons. You know, of all the research I've done, the research on solitary confinement definitely is in alignment about the physical and psychological effects of isolating people. So I know the department doesn't use the term solitary anymore, but still, people are separated from the general population. This is a problem for human beings who need social contact. There's a huge national movement called Unlock the Box. This is going viral across the continental United States because people are realizing that people are really damaged. So what's interesting is that the depart, the state sends people to prison for harming people, and then we harm the people that we send to prison. This is a huge problem because most people are coming back to our community. And what kind of shape will they be in? I know many people who have committed suicide post-release because they just could not adjust. And many people who are in solitary find it very difficult to interact with other humans. So we really appreciate you're hearing this bill, and we say quality care, adequate protection, and humane medical care. They're far better than solitary confinement. So please unlock the box and pass this bill. Mahalo for this chance to testify. We hope.
Good, thank you. Members, any questions? If hearing none, we'll move on to HB seventeen thirty-nine relating to public safety. First up, Department of Public Safety in support.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Max Lutani again, Department of Public Safety. Who's standing on our written testimony in support of this mission? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We also have Common Cause Hawaii in support, Committee Alliance on Prisons in support, and ACLU of Hawaii in support, although none have indicated they are here to testify today. But I did just see Cat Brady. Cat, did you want to testify on this matter?
Um, sure. I just wanted to say this is a housekeeping measure because the Act one seventy-nine was passed and the mistake in it said people should be released at their maximum. And actually, the intent was to release people at their minimum. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. All right, members, any questions? If not, we'll move on to HB sixteen seventy-six, HD1, relating to data collection. First up, we have the AG's office with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and the committee. My name is Christopher Young, and I am the Administrator of the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center, Department of the Attorney General. We did submit written testimony, which I would like to just briefly highlight. We support the intent of the bill, although there will be costs associated with trying to collect this additional data. And we put it in our, our comments as to it'll take us between three and six months and eighty hours of staff time. I am not sure whether the police can do this and what the cost will be to the four county police departments. It is also a measure that is using the criminal justice data system to collect information, and we're unclear on how this information is going to be used. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm available for questions.
Good, thank you. Next up, we have the Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women in Support. Not here. We have the judiciary with comments. Hawaii Superior Coalition in support. And about eight individuals all in support. Only one's here, though. Annika Martin, are you here? Nope, not here either. Okay, all in support, though, although judiciary came in with comments. Members, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to HB twenty-one seventeen, HD1, relating to the Hawaii Code of Military Justice. First up, we have the Hawaii National Guard in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and Vice Chair Matayoshi. Lieutenant Colonel Lloyd Phelps on behalf of Hawaii National Guard, testifying on behalf of Major General Kenahara. DOD stands behind the written testimony that Major General Hara submitted, and I will be standing by for any questions that anybody has. Thank you.
Good, thank you. We also have the Department of Defense in support and the judiciary with comments, but neither are here. You testify in person. Members, any questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to HB twelve thirty-nine relating to law enforcement. First up, we have the Law Enforcement Standards Board in support.
Can't tell if my video came up. My apologies. Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and the members of the committee. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to testify in behalf of support for House Bill twelve thirty-nine, Part Three, relating directly to the Law Enforcement Standards Board. I submit my written testimony and stand by the testimony requesting the amendments to this bill to be the same as this committee has approved under House Bill eight ninety-two, and I'll be available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the AG's office with comments.
And good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Amy Morikami for the Department of Attorney General. Our comments are that we would, in the sections relating to the Law Enforcement Officer Independent Review Board, suggest that the phrase alleged misconduct be defined to specify what misconduct the board should address, and as Chief Raybuck mentioned, we would ask that regarding to the Law Enforcement Standards Board, that the provisions of House Bill eight nine two be used for the board. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next up, we have Department of Transportation in support.
Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and members of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs, thank you for the opportunity to testify. The Department of Transportation is in support of this very important measure. We would like to recommend funding for the board, and we thank you for your consideration. And in the interest of time, we will stand on our written testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, ACLU with comments.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Carrie Anne, she wrote on behalf of the ACLU of Hawaii, we offer comments on HB twelve thirty-nine. Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Carrie Anne. She wrote on behalf of the ACLU of Hawaii, we offer comments on HB twelve thirty-nine. As you compare, as you consider the fate of the Law Enforcement Officer Independent Review Board, which I'll refer to as Board because it's a mouthful. We urge you to consider to reimagine the role of policing in our society. Compared to other public institutions, law enforcement operates under a shroud of secrecy with far less democratic accountability. As noted in the President's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, policing fails its community when it is not constitutional, when it lacks integrity and clear mission, and when it is not conducted by unbiased and adequately trained staff. As long as policing exists, the ACLU advocates for fair and consistent policing, building or rebuilding trust with the community and officers that they serve and prevent avoidable deaths and injuries to citizens as well as police officers. In response to growing demands for law enforcement transparency and accountability in Hawaii, this board was created. To date, however, efforts to reform our policing system through this independent review board has been ineffective. The law enforcement board is structurally flawed as it lacks the elements necessary to make an independent oversight or civilian review board effective. As noted by the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, these bodies were created for meaningful oversight with the overarching goals of promoting transparency and accountability within policing to the communities they serve. Independent oversight must include these critical elements. First, we ask that you establish an independent and strong community oversight civilian review board to hold officers accountable for wrongdoing. And that these boards should consist of members who are nominated by civic organizations and representative of the communities most impacted by policing, that they have broad scope to review policing, have independent investigatory authority, including subpoena power, have disciplinary authority, be able to audit policies and procedures, have ample funding, have the power to review and implement policy that is not subjected to unilateral veto by police or county government officials, and that they publish their work and findings for the community. And that we
Two minutes, if you could start to put your testimony, please.
Sure. We ask that you take a look at the current composition of the board. It is literally stacked with law enforcement officials, people with background law enforcement, either prosecutors, past police, that is not indicative of the community. Currently, there's zero public members nominated by civic organizations that are representative of the communities most impacted. And I just want to add this last thought. Civilian oversight bodies must be given real power, or else they risk being performative political statements with no actual teeth or power. If we're going to keep in existence this board, ensure that it has all of the elements necessary for true oversight. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, members. We also have Shoppo in opposition and one individual in support, but neither are here to testify today. Members, any questions? Rep Nakamura.
I have a question for ACLU, Carrie Anne. Who would you recommend adding to the board composition to accomplish what you're hoping for?
Sure. Thank you, Representative Nakamura. So in terms of I wouldn't necessarily mention any particular individuals by name. But I think, again, if you look at this oversight principles, they're actually national organizations that have guiding principles and standards for community civilian oversight. So these principles are gathered from those organizations and entities. And so it is a foremost principle that you have community representation. So if there are organizations within the community, so we know factually that native Hawaiians are desperately impacted by policing. We could look to organizations, perhaps Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Native Hawaiian Community Organizations, even healthcare organizations that serve the Native Hawaiian community. That could be one example. Pacific Islander Communities, Micronesians, We Are Oceania. For African Americans, there could be other organizations. So I think we can look to those organizations in the community, and they likely can offer recommendations. But truly, if you look at the number, it is, again, there's, I think it's proposed nine ex-official members with governmental agents. And then it proposes five community members. But when you look at the criteria for consideration by the governor, it's heavily swayed again that you have law enforcement background or legal, no offense against attorneys. I'm an attorney myself. But again, we need to have the representation of the people who are most directly impacted. And thank you, Representative.
Okay, members, any other questions? If hearing none, we will move on to HB twenty-one seventy-nine relating to collection of delinquent taxes. Department of Taxation in support.
We stand by written testimony.
Yeah, thank you. We also have one individual in opposition. Members, any questions? The hearing none will move on to HB eighteen twenty-eight, HD one relating to the Taxation Board of Review, Department of Taxation in support.
We stand by our written testimony.
Yeah, thank you. We also have the Department of Budget and Finance with comments and one individual in opposition, but neither are here today. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to HB twenty-two thirty-one relating to state departments. First up, we have the AG's office in opposition.
Yeah, hi. I'm having trouble. Can you see me?
We cannot see you, but we can hear you. You could, did you get your video working quickly? Otherwise, you can
I don't seem to have my video working.
Yeah, why don't you proceed by audio? You're our only testifier for this bill.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi and members of the committee. My name is Gary Sugunuma. I am a Deputy Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General opposes this measure. The reasons for our opposition are stated in our written submission. I'd just like to add that the compliance function of seeking out and assessing tax violators falls and lies rather with the Department of Taxation. Now, that function is carried out more specifically by the Department of Taxation's Compliance Division, which is staffed with, which includes rather a team of auditors, tax collectors and investigators. If any legal issues arise during or in the performance of this compliance function, the Department of Taxation also has the Rules Office, which is staffed with attorneys. So they can consult with attorneys internally. And if the need arises, they can contact our department for assistance as well, and we would be happy to help. And this would be, you know, anything pre-litigation. Because anything that's in litigation in court, we're already involved in. With that, I have nothing further. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We also have the Department of Taxation with with written testimony in support. Members, any questions? The hearing none will move on to HB fourteen twenty-three, HD one relating to violations of campaign finance law. First up, we have Campaign Spending Commission in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Gary Cam. I am here on behalf of the Commission. The Commission is in support of this bill. It is to increase the fines, potential fines for against super PACs. We've been trying to get this passed for a number of years. We do ask this committee to reinstate the the fine amount that was blanked out or or put whatever fine amount that this committee feels appropriate and also put a good date on it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Common Cause Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We support HB fourteen twenty-three, House Draft One, because it increases the fines against super PACs from $1,000 to an undefined amount. We suggest that if you insert a fine amount for the undefined amount, that it be no lower than $5,000. Thank you for allowing Common Cause to testify in support of HB fourteen twenty-three, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, members. We also have written testimony from the League of Women Voters in support. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to HB eighteen eighty-one, HD one relating to campaign financing. First up, we have Campaign Spending Commission in support.
Thank you again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. The Commission supports the intent of this bill. But the Commission will ask this committee to hold this bill for now. I think I think this bill is is a great idea, except it needs to be the implementation has to be a little different, just than taking a model act and plunking it down into chapter eleven. The language does not match the current language in the campaign finance law. I think we need to figure out if we can attain the goals that this bill seeks by amending our existing law instead of putting a model law and into chapter eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Campaign Legal Center in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Aaron McKee, and I am legal counsel at the Campaign Legal Center. And we're in support of HB eighteen eighty-one, HD one, because it does provide tools to ensure that Hawaii voters have more information about the wealthy special interests who are trying to influence Hawaii elections. We stand on our written testimony and are happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, Common Cause Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We want to thank you for hearing this important bill, HB eighteen eighty-one, and we stand in support of it. We think this bill is extraordinarily necessary in Hawaii as it reveals the true source of the big money that is spending in our elections for our election ads. It requires anyone who is spending or acting as a conduit of $10,000 or more in a two-year election cycle to keep track of the large donations it receives and disclose where this money comes from. This law doesn't limit anyone from spending, but it protects donors who do not want their money spent on election ads from having it spent against their wishes. Individual donors could still spend on ads if they wish to. So we think this is a good way to know who is spending in our elections and to trace back to the original source. And we're available to answer any questions. Thank you for allowing Common Cause to testify in support of this measure. We understand this may be difficult. And this is a complicated law, but we are willing to work with the Campaign Spending Commission to implement this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And members, we also have written testimony from the League of Women Voters in support. Members, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to HB one eight eight eight, HD one relating to electioneering communications. First up, we have the Campaign Spending Commission in support.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. The Commission supports this bill. But I would like to point out two errors in the bill that needs correction. The first one is on page five at line eighteen. At a bulk rate was deleted by Act three, so that language needs to be removed at a bulk rate at page five, line eighteen. And the other one, I think this error came about because it was in one of the Campaign Spending Commission's bill. But page six, line twenty, where it says non-candidate committee, that should be changed to candidate committee. Because that is what the current language in the statute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Common Cause Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We support HB eighteen eighty-eight, HD one. We have a suggested amendment, and we do seek clarification of this bill. We appreciate having this bill with the HD one requiring subsequent disclosure filings after the initial 2,000 aggregate spending threshold is reached for non-candidate committees. We think that is very necessary. So thank you for this. We do have a concern, and I believe the Campaign Spending Commission touched upon that, that there was an error with the definition of person on page six, lines twenty and twenty-one. We hope that gets corrected. In the current statute, person does not person is not supposed to include non-candidate committees, and it does in this HD one. And we hope that is rectified. And we also seek clarification that electionary communications will still apply to election advertisements published by electronic means. It could have just been late in the evening, and I was extraordinarily tired. But we thought the standing committee report was a little confusing. So and I apologize for that. And so that that those are just our suggested amendment and the clarification. Thank you very much for allowing Common Cause to testify in support of HB eighteen eighty-eight, HD one with a suggested amendment and seeking clarification. I'm available for any questions. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. That's all the testifiers we have today. Members, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to HB fourteen twenty-four, HD one relating to candidate committee and non-candidate committee organizational reports. Just one testifier here today, Campaign Spending Commission in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. The Commission is in support of this bill, and we'll just stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Members, any questions? If not, we'll move on to HB eight 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 six relating to professionally licensed or certified government employees. First up, the Department of Attorney General in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Karen Inagaki, Deputy Attorney General. The department is in strong support of this bill. All government employees have a conditional or qualified privilege if they're acting in scope, in the scope of their their jobs. And unless they have the privilege, unless they act with malice or for an improper purpose. And the State Art Liability Act was passed so that the state would be responsible for the actions of its employees who who committed simple negligence. The the bill is in response to a decision by the ICA in the Sling Left case where they made a distinction between regular employees and employees who hold professional licenses, like doctors. And the Sling Left case involved doctors at the Public Safety Department. And what happened was they said that the doctors were not acting as government employees, but they were acting as doctors. So they made a distinction and said they're not entitled to the qualified privilege that every other government employee has. So it was sort of a, you know, really, we believe a wrongly decided decision because it didn't really make a lot of sense. So what happened with public safety was the doctors now would be personally liable. So their personal assets would be at risk. And so the department lost some doctors and nurses because they were all afraid that they they're they would lose, you know, their homes. So what happened was public safety had to purchase insurance for the doctors. And that solved one problem, but but the Sling Left decision, the analysis in that case would apply to other professionals, not just doctors. And it would not be feasible for every department who hires doctors, lawyers, nurses, architects, engineers. It would not be feasible to purchase insurance for all of them. And, you know, the that is not just conjecture that it would be applied to other professions and not just doctors. Because we have cases where the public defenders are being sued now, and the complaints are using language directly from the Sling Left case, saying they're they're exercising legal discretion, not governmental discretion, which is basically they're acting like lawyers. Okay, thank you. And and they're acting as lawyers and not government employees. So now the the professionals get less protection than other government employees. So we would ask that this bill be passed, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have the Department of Public Safety in support.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, Max O'Tonny, Director of Department of Public Safety. Department strongly supports this measure. In summary of our written testimony, Department has had histories in the past of, you know, recruiting qualified medical professionals to address our health needs in our facilities. Believe that this measure will help the department to recruit and retain healthcare professionals, ensuring that, you know, they won't be held liable for discretionary action judgment that they carry out while working. Be available for any comments or questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Association for Justice in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee.
Uh, Lord Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Evan Oy on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. We stand on our written comments and strong support of this measure and will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Members, that's all the testifiers we have today. Any questions? Is seeing none, we'll move on to HB eighteen forty-one relating to the judiciary. We have one testifier in support, in support today, Law Office of Jacob G. Delapone. Delapine?
Delapine, yeah, thank you. Uh, Attorney Jacob Delapine, uh, thank you for taking my testimony today. Um, I've been handling these types of cases for about seven years now, uh, both as parents' counsel and a guardian ad litem. And, um, as far as I know, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right about this, we're the only set of councils um, that are appointed by the court that had their budget cut, uh, or their pay cut, um, by nineteen percent. So that was for parents' councils and guardian ad litem, um, had their pay cut for thirty percent uh, because of COVID. And, and even though the judiciary's budget was restored to pre-COVID levels, uh, in January of twenty twenty-one, um, this is something that the judiciary has, for some reason with no explanation, maintained, uh, since that time. So they're still paying us at these extremely emergency cut rates. And we were told, uh, at the time when we accepted these, uh, cuts, the nineteen percent and thirty percent respective cuts, that, uh, we were doing so because state employees were about to be furloughed. All departments were going to have to make major cuts across the board. There were going to be budget shortfalls. The sky was falling, and that was before the federal, uh, COVID aid was made available to state and local governments, uh, in early twenty twenty-one. Um, no other, you know, none of those things happened. Employees weren't furloughed. Departments didn't have their budgets absolutely obliterated, uh, like we thought might happen because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, yet, parents' councils and guardians ad light on doing this important work for parents and children, uh, maintain these cuts that no one else had to go through. So that's my, that's my little whining session. Um, I, I, it, it's no surprise that someone who works in this line of work would support an increase for the statutory level of pay. But I, I do want to point out that, uh, criminal court-appointed attorneys, so, uh, you know, people doing traffic tickets all the way up to murders, uh, no matter what classification of crime you're representing someone in, you get paid the same statutory rate under, uh, HRS eight oh two five, and that's ninety dollars an hour. Uh, it used to be a lot less. I think it was forty-five.
That's been two minutes. If you could start to conclude your testimony.
Okay, so it, uh, this, this statute brings it into parity with the other statutes. It's ridiculous that, uh, for an area of law where attorneys have to have immense levels of training and experience to even be able to enter the courtroom as court-appointed counsel, we're getting paid far less, thirty percent less than, uh, you know, someone who handles a traffic ticket. So I think, uh, it's high time that this increase happened. It brings it into parity with, uh, things that the legislature did back in twenty-ten and raising the criminal rate, and I am in support of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Members, we have written testimony from the Judiciary in support, Legal Aid Society of Hawaii in support, and one other, one other individual in support, uh, not present here today. Any questions?
Vice Chair.
Yes, Chair.
I have a question. Um, Delapine?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so before the judiciary cut the, oh, rates, what was the rate?
The rate was, it was a contracted rate, uh, in the first circuit. It's different for every circuit. And, uh, it's important to point out that the first circuit was the only circuit that had court-appointed council's pay rate changed because of COVID. And I know this because I'm on other contracts as well. But, uh, prior to COVID nineteen, it was a flat rate of one hundred and forty-five dollars per month, per case. Uh, that rate got cut down to one hundred and twenty dollars per month, per case. Um, that, that's a contracted rate, and it's supposedly based on the statutory rate of sixty ninety, uh, per that five seventy-one statute, uh, the one that's up for amendment under this bill. Um, so the, that, that low statutory rate of per case per month is based on the judiciary's calculation of what they think, what amount of work per month they believe that, uh, you know, a regular attorney handling a regular case is going to do. So it was cut from one forty-five per month to one twenty.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and just to clarify, that's a flat rate. That's not per hour. That's just for every case that you are appointed on, you're paid one hundred and twenty dollars total per month.
Uh, can I follow up, Chair, or do you?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Um, so I, I'm noticing here in the bill, it's an hourly rate for the bill. Uh, but you're saying there's, it's, it's actually a monthly rate. Is that an error in the bill?
No, not an error in the bill. Uh, the bill, that, that is the, uh, statutory sort of minimum level of compensation. Uh, if you read down further in that, uh, in that statute, uh, there's a provision that allows the, uh, judiciary to contract with attorneys, uh, on rates that are based on the above rates. So it's based on a sixty dollar an hour out of court and a ninety dollar an hour in-court rate. So the judiciary, I don't know how they exactly they did this calculation, but, um, the current contracts for, or the current contract for the first circuit pays one hundred and twenty dollars per month. No hourly rate. It's a flat rate, no matter if you work a thousand hours on a case.
Okay, so, but those, that offer, a contracted offer is based on these base rates. So you're saying if the base rates go up, the contract should go up to.
I, I would hope so, but, you know, having, with the judiciary having cut us for COVID nineteen and no other department having been cut for COVID nineteen, I'm not super confident that the rate will go up even if the statute changes.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Right, if not, we'll move on to HB twenty-three sixty-five relating to electronic citations. First up, Department of Transportation in support.
Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, and members of the committee. The Department of Transportation is in support of the measure, and in the interest of time, we would like to stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, and Patrick, I see another Department of Transportation employee, Karen Kayakina. Is she here to testify as well, or is it just you?
Sir, sir, I believe she's my backup is what.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have judiciary in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, and committee members. My name is Kevin Thornton. I work for the judiciary in the area of information technology. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of HB twenty-three sixty-five. The judiciary stands on its written testimony and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have HPD in support.
Lord Chair, Vice Chair, committee members, Acting Captain Andre Peters, on behalf of the Homeland Police Department. Uh, we stand by our testimony. I'll be, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. And members, we have one more written testimony from Department of Budget and Finance with comments. That's all we have today. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to HB twenty thirty-eight. We have the judiciary with comments but not appearing. That's it. Uh, so we will move on to HB twenty eighty-five. Proposing amendments to Article seven, Sections twelve and thirteen of the Hawaii Constitution to expressly provide that the legislature may authorize the county, the counties to issue tax increment bonds and to exclude tax increment bonds from, from determinations of the funded debt of the counties. Glad we kept those titles real short and concise. Uh, first up, we have Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, um, and Chair. Uh, I'm Mary Alice Evans, the Director of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Um, we're in strong support of this measure. We, uh, this is our bill. Um, we need this constitutional amendment to make it possible for counties to issue bonds for, uh, needed regional infrastructure to make affordable housing, uh, possible in areas where the current infrastructure doesn't have the capacity to support, uh, increased units of housing. This measure, uh, if passed by the voters, uh, and this legislature would remove a cloud that would allow the, uh, the counties to, on their own decision, decide to issue these kinds of bonds. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism in support.
Chair, I'm, uh, testifying for the Director of, uh, Department of Business. And, uh.
I have the, I have the Office of. No. Is Mike Bacardi not coming? Did I, did I get that wrong? Or, or are these the same department?
Yes, um, the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development is attached to the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism as an attached agency.
My mistake, uh. Yeah, two different testimonies. So, anyway. Tax Foundation employee with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee, Jade McMillan on behalf of Tamia Machika and Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments submitted on this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all the testifiers we have. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to HB twenty-four thirty-six relating to gambling. First up, we have the Office of the Public Defender in opposition.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am Assistant Public Defender Lee Hayakawa. The Office of the Public Defender opposes the elevation of a repeat offense of gambling, possession of gambling records, and possession of gambling devices from a misdemeanor to a class C felony. The Office of the Public Defender supports the amendment to the forfeiture provision in the statute. We have submitted written testimony on this measure, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And next we have Honolulu Prosecutors also in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor Trish Nakamatsu on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Department. We are in opposition to the bill, particularly the section regarding that asset forfeiture. We note in our written testimony that gambling actually accounts for about eighty-five percent of the civil asset forfeiture cases that we're currently doing. Uh, so if that, those proceeds were redirected, and while we do agree that homeless programs that addressing homelessness and things of that nature are, are very important. If all of those proceeds were redirected, then it, it really wouldn't cover the work that we do, um, on these civil cases, um, which we do feel are, are an important and effective tool. Um. With regards to the section on creating a second offense for those listed, um, offenses, we note that these are not actually the, the offenses that we typically charge in gambling, how illegal gambling cases. Um, we're open to any discussion, have to talk to any stakeholders, um, but otherwise it, it just doesn't seem to be very effective as written. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we have another individual in opposition. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to HB twenty-four ninety-nine relating to Native Hawaiian Affairs. First up, we have AG's office with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, Jodi Eve, the Department of the Attorney General. We know that there is a potential constitutional problem with this bill, and we suggested a small amendment which should, um, address that issue. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have D-Bet with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi and Committee members. I'm Jamie Lum with D-Bet, and, uh, the department stands on its written comments. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next, we have E-L-N-R with comments. Um, Sir Donner, you're muted again.
Okay, um, apologize, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, the department stands on its written testimony, um, offering comments. I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, thank you. Next, we have the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement in support.
Lord Chair and members of the committee, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and testify. I'm Cuhiel Lewis. I'm the CEO for CNHA, the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. Uh, I wanted to be here to share how this bill came about. This bill is a creation of collaboration with our members, the four hundred members that are part of CNHA's structure. It also came by way of leadership at the House engaging us to say, what are some of the critical issues and ways in which we could address the needs in our community? So this bill is, is, is representative of those conversations. Uh, it doesn't address everything, but it certainly helps to supplement the needs that we believe will allow us to build capacity, uh, help our community organizations establish themselves so that they can be more self-sustaining. Um, and it's a beginning, and, and, and in light of the important nature of the work we do as empowering Hawaiian communities, we see this as a vehicle to enhance a relationship too with the state, so we can be better stewards of this Aina. Thank you. And the rest of our testimony outlining what the bill entails is in our written testimony, which we'll stand on.
Thank you. We have one more individual here to testify and support, Edward Aleloha Ayao. He's not present. Uh, members, we also have, uh, testimony, written testimony and support from the Office of Community Services, the Hawaii Tourism Authority, comments from the Department of Budget and Finance, opposition from the Center for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies,
Recommendation on this matter is to make several changes on page two, line one through nine. The specific or legislations listed will be deleted. On page four, line 13, the word biennium should be changed to year. Note that the bill contains blank appropriations and a defective effective date. So members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, the vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 2309, HG1 with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote I, Rafi Chiama.
Hi.
Rep Kobayashi.
Hi.
Rep Lo Presti.
Hi.
Rep Lowen.
Hi.
Rep McElvy.
Hi.
Rep Nakamura.
Hi.
Rep Takumi.
Hi.
Rep Tokioke. Excused, report.
Hi.
Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. House Bill 2311, House Chart One, related to Napali rehabilitation programs. Chair notes that the bill already contains a blank appropriation and defective effective date. Chair's recommendation, remove this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 2311, HG1, as is, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 2171, House Chart One, relate to the, relate to public safety. The the measure requires the new director's position be established by the salary commission. However, there may be a gap between when the commission next meets and when the position is filled. The on page 34, line 12, 634-291 should be six, should be changed to 634-29. Deleting the one. On page 40, line 14, the word rape should be changed to sexual assault for consistency. On page 42, line five, there are error quotation marks that should be removed. There is also a note that I don't need to do that. The bill also contains a defective effective date. Additional changes I would like to make is on page 101, delete line six through 10. And delete, delete all of section 45 from the bill. And on page nine, line seven, we'll blank out appropriation. Also, for the Department of Corrections reporting, we will delete 29 lines, section 29 to 32. And other technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Yeah, well, and yeah, I will do a letter to the Director of Public Safety to request all the future org chart and the transition of those positions into the new organizations. In members, any questions or comments?
Chair, brief comment?
Yes, Representative Ward.
I would still like to see a better cost benefit ratio. And value added. I don't see the light at the, at the, at the efficiency level and particularly the cost level. And the fact that, hey, this is going to be a voluntary thing, and if that blows up, we're basically going to be stuck with the worst situation than if we didn't pass it. So I just have a lot of reservation. I think the bill needs a lot of work and a lot of discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Representative Ward, if you want to drop the email outlining your concerns, I will be sure to forward that to the department.
Thank you.
Yes, Rep Nakamura.
Thank you, Chair, for making the committee comments as well with the org chart and the transition plan. I think that's really important to see upfront, to understand how much of it is moving positions and how much of it is adding new positions. Also, I think it's, I think Don't Care needs a stronger enforcement arm, and I'm just wondering if, you know, this is the opportunity to consolidate that under this body, this new department. So I will be voting with reservations.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Hospital 1738, related to confinement. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 2171, HG1 with amendments, noting the previously excused member and the reservations of Rep Nakamura. Any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital 1738, House Chart One, related to confinement. Chair's recommendation is that we defer this measure. Hospital 1739, related to public safety. Chair's recommendation is that we move this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 1739, as is, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital 1676, House Chart One, related to data collection. Chair's recommendation is that I'm going to talk to the author of the bill to suggest a study surrounding the implications of the data collection. And so we'll defer this bill at this time. Hospital 2117, House Chart One, related to the Hawaii Court of Military Justice. Also, a number of concerns about this measure, and I will talk to the author and defer the bill at this time. Hospital 1239, related to law enforcement. Chair's recommendation is that we amend the bill by striking a line, page two, line 17, to page three, line 10. we also adopt the law enforcement standards board amendments with the exception of including a law enforcement officer on the board. And that's, members, any questions or comments? Not, vice chair has amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 1239 with amendments, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital 21979, authorizing the department director's tractation to apply to the circuit court to convert certain tax leads into enforceable civil judgments. Chair's recommendations that we pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 2179, as is, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1828, House Chart One, related to the tax, taxation border review. Chair will note that on page two, line 10, should existing statutory language be amended to clarify that the vice chair shall serve as the chairperson during the chair's temporary inability to act due to recusal. The decision will be that the vice chair can't serve as chair in the chair's temporary ability to act. So with that amendment, members, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HB 1828, HG1, with amendments, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendations adopted.
A House Bill 2231, related to state departments. The tax director is talking to the attorney general, and so we will defer this matter. Hospital fourteen twenty three, House Draft One, related to violations of campaign spending law. The bill does contain a blank appropriation and a defective effective date. Chair's recommendations that we pass this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HP fourteen twenty three, HG one, as is, noting the previous excuse member, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital eighteen eighty one, House Draft One, related to campaign finance. We do have another bill coming over to us, so we will defer this matter. Hospital eighteen eighty eight, House Draft One, related to election communications. Chair's recommendations on the, on page five, line eighteen. We delete the word bulk rate. And on page six, line twenty, we indicate candidate committees. And that's it. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP one eight eight eight, HG one, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital fourteen twenty four, House Draft One. Chair's recommendation that we pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair?
Quick, quick. Rep McKelby.
I had to beg your indulgence. This actually slipped by me. We were gonna, with this bill, make it clean because it's just a housekeeping bill. So if you wanted to make the date clean, by all means, I'd get my support, but I just wanted to flag that for the record. We were, we were gonna just leave it alone because it was a housekeeping bill, but we defect dated it. As, as we were doing a whole bunch like that. So anyway, for your consideration, if you still want to leave it defected, that's fine, but.
Okay, with the previous chair's indulgence, we will make the effective date July first, twenty twenty two. Okay, then, as amended. Members, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, as amended, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is the past HP fourteen twenty four, HG one, with amendments, noting the previous excuse member, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital eighty six, related to professional license or certified government employees. Chair's recommendations to pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HP eighty six, as is, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital eighteen forty one. Chair's recommendations that we indicate the amount for non-licensed attorneys assisting in this matter to be at seventy five dollars an hour. Members, any questions or comments?
We comment, Chair. So this is only for attorneys who aren't licensed in the state of Hawaii, or is it just for people acting in this capacity, foreign attorneys?
I think it's one and the same, Rep McKelby. It's just for those who are not licensed attorneys, and I'm assuming that's in the state of Hawaii for the bill.
So.
I don't have the bill in front of me.
Okay, no, thanks. I just was curious about that.
Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP eighteen forty one, with amendments, noting the previous excuse member, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital twenty three sixty five, related to electronic citations. Chair recommends technical amendments, the for clarity, consistency, and style. Will note that the bill does contain a blank appropriation, defective effective date. Chair's recommendations that we move this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, unamended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP twenty three sixty five, as is, noting the excuse excuse members, Tokioke and Lowen. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital twenty thirty eight, related to constitutional amendments. On line, on page one, line thirteen, the word possible should be changed to practical. For consistency, and also on page two, line one, and page four, line eleven. Chair is also going to change the time allowed to the Supreme Court from two days to seven days, forty eight hours to seven days. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP twenty thirty eight, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Hey, hospital twenty eighty five, proposing amendments to Article seven, section twelve, and thirty of the Hoistake Constitution. Especially provide that the legislature may authorize counties to issue tax increment bonds, exclude tax increment bonds from the combination of the funded debt of the counties. Chair's recommendations, we pass this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as, as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HP twenty eighty five, as is, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations?
Reservations, Chair.
The reservations for a report, any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hospital twenty four thirty six, related to gambling. Chair's recommendations, we defer this. Hospital twenty four ninety nine, related to Napali Affairs. We're gonna go with the AG's amendments to prevent the, this measure being considered special legislation. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP twenty four ninety nine, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital twenty four seventy five, House Draft One, related to state holidays. Established July thirty first each year as law, hoi hoi, eh? Effective July one, twenty forty four. Chair's recommendations, let me pass this as unamended. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is best HP twenty four seventy five, HG one, as is, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital sixteen sixty three, House Draft One. Related to aquatic resources. On page ten, line eleven, the word of should be changed to or. Technical amendments needed for clarify, to clarify consistency and style. The bill already contains a defective effective date. Also, incorporating the L and R's proposed House Draft to. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP sixteen fifty three, HG one, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Hospital fourteen forty eight, related to traffic fines. Members, a proposed draft was proposed edits was circulated to the members. Also, we are looking at technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And Representative Nakamura's recommendation that we limit the portions of the application of this to specific portions as designated by county ordinance. Members, any questions or comments?
Real quick question, Chair. So are we still directing the money to the, solely to the police department of the counties? I saw that in there. I thought I saw that in there.
Yes. It's directed to just the, just the surcharge on a county roadway, highway. Yeah. Where there is this designated area. And if, if, let's say, a visitor parks illegally on this county roadway, that it's a thirty five dollar fine currently, and then there will be a two hundred dollar surcharge. That two hundred dollar surcharge goes to the county police department. To enforce this program.
Okay, no, I've got some concern. Well, I think it could be a part, a separation of powers issue and directing it to the police, but also because, you know, public works and the others that maintain the road itself and other entities that do potentially do service, you know what I'm saying, for trash pickup, they could possibly have that funding as well that could use to help, you know, address the infrastructure as a whole. So just for right now, I'm just gonna go WR only because I think that, you know, the county should have the flexibility to, the county itself, to designate where the surcharge funds would go. So hopefully we can talk more about it, but just for right now, it's just a WR.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, vice chair. As amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP fourteen forty eight, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members and the reservations of Representative McKelby, any other members voting with reservations?
Were in reservations for award?
Reservations reward, any, any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Hospital fifteen thirty six, related to the judiciary. Appropriate supplemental funds to the judiciary. And in addition to the the judiciary budget as as published in the bill, the chair is going to recommend a number of additions in the committee report. Two million dollars for reintegration of programs, including education, culture, and vocational training programs to be coordinated by the judiciary. Fifty thousand dollars for technology development phase of the criminal pre-child data reporting and collection system per Act one seven nine, on behalf of the Criminal Justice Research Institute. Seventy five thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Legal Aid Society. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for volunteer legal services. And the top two priorities of the course for capital improvement. Five million dollars for Ka'ahu'manu, Holly fire alarm replacement. And one point five million dollars for Ka'ahu'manu, all the expansion and reconfiguration of the Sheriff Patrol Station and the main security checkpoint. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair. As amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP fifteen thirty six, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, our final bill today, House Bill seventy seven, seventeen eighty eight. The Waikia Peninsula redevelopment. The proposed amendments are amending the purpose to further explain the need for the measure and extinguish the Waikia Peninsula from other public lands. Renaming the Waikia, the Waikia Planning Committee as the Waikia Redevelopment and Planning Committee. And clarifying the committee is a redevelopment and planning committee. Deleting language from the management public lands within the Waikia Peninsula Development District. Redevelopment District to the Waikia Redevelopment and Planning Committee. Deleting language, authorize the Waikia Development, Redevelopment and Planning Committee to lease public lands in the Waikia Peninsula redevelopment district. Clarifying that the Waikia Redevelopment and Planning Committee authorization to renew or renegotiate any of these in connection with any project contained in the redevelopment plan for the designated district beyond terms and conditions of the committee deemed deemed, on the conditions as the committee deems advisable. And make the technical non-substitution amendments for the purpose of clarity, consistency, and style. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is best HP seventeen eighty eight, HG one, with amendments, noting the previous excuse members, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, we have four bills on the agenda for tomorrow. Sorry, I didn't plan on that, but things happen. With that, we are adjourned.